This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for June 17th at about 6:32 PM. And if we could please stand and serve the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is replying to the United States of America, made to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good. So first up, do we have anybody here for sit and speak? Not noticing anybody offhand, so I'm going to assume that we don't have anybody here to talk about anything that's not on the agenda. So I think we'll just jump right into our program. This is a special meeting tonight. We wanted to focus on our audit report. So we have three members of our Select Board. Cindy's out of town, and Dan is at a Conservation Commission meeting and may join us or may not, depending on how long that runs. So we at least have a quorum for Select Board. And then we have Reggie Green and Doug Hamel from our Finance Committee, and there might be two other members coming at some point for there. And if so, we'll call that meeting to order when you have a quorum. Okay? All right. So with it, I think we are going to just get started and introduce our guest from Markham, which is our audit firm, and this is Tanya Kempfle, if I did that correctly. All right. And so, yeah, we'll let you start wherever you'd like to. I don't know if you want to start. Just an overview. This is for anybody who's listening. This is the FY22 Audit. And wherever you -- we've got it online here, so if you wanted to deal with management letter first, or whatever's appropriate, you lead us, okay?
That's great. I'll just start by giving you a brief overview of the audit process, as well as kind of the goals and responsibilities of the various parties involved in the audit, including us as your independent auditors, management of the town, and then your role as the Finance Committee and --
Select Board.
And then we'll take a look at the three reports that have been issued in the back four. Now, in terms of our responsibilities as your independent auditors, we are ultimately responsible for issuing an opinion on the town's financial statements. We're also responsible for planning and performing our audit to provide reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, that the financial statements are free of material misstatements. We don't look at every single transaction. We don't examine every invoice. We don't verify every receipt that comes in the door. We don't look at every single balance that's provided to us by the town accountant. That's not what an audit is designed to do. Our audits are conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, and those standards require us to use a concept known as materiality to --
Actually, the microphone is off. I just had a call.
Oops.
Here we go.
I wasn't yelling loud enough. Okay, that's better. So the concept known as materiality, which drives the transactions we look at, the balances we test, things like that. Now, in terms of --
Just a second. Do you want to wait, or do you want to see if Donna's coming, or call to order?
Go for it.
Okay. Yeah, so pop into your mic there. That mic is on.
The microphone.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's fine.
It's on already. It's on.
It's on.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to call the Joint Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:36. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good. Thank you. All right.
Perfect. Now, in terms of management's responsibilities, they are ultimately responsible for the financial statements. We assist in the preparation of those statements, but management is responsible for accepting them and taking ownership of them. Management's also responsible for establishing and maintaining effective internal controls, and ensuring that the town complies with the various laws and regulations that are applicable to its day-to-day activities. As part of the audit process, management's responsible for making all information and schedules and supporting documentation available to us in a timely fashion. And at the end of the audit, management is responsible for providing us with a letter that confirms the various representations that were made to us as part of the audit process. So, you know, we do rely on information provided by the town, and we ask that the management of the town, you know, provide assurances that what was provided to us is correct and accurate to the best of their knowledge. Now, in terms of your responsibilities as the Select Board and Finance Committee, you're responsible for overseeing the entire process. You know, the beginning of the audit, we send communications to the Select Board letting them know that the audit is beginning. We make inquiries during the audit itself to make sure that there's nothing we should be made aware of, any issues or concerns. And at the end of the audit, we have a meeting to discuss the results of what occurred, and you can ask questions and follow up on the reports that are issued. Does anyone have any questions before I continue? Yes.
Tanya, what was your personal role on the team?
Sure. I'm the partner in charge of the audit. So I oversee the audit process. You know, the team here that works with me comes onsite to do the actual testing, and I review work papers and reports and stuff like that.
You didn't personally interact with town staff?
I do as needed, mostly through email. I have been onsite in the past, but I was not this past fiscal year '22. Yeah.
Thanks. Hey, Becky. All right. Good. We have our Finance Committee. They've already called themselves to order, so we're legal. All right, so, Tanya, go ahead.
All right. So we're going to start by taking a look at the financial statements, which is kind of the bigger of the three documents themselves. Your financial statements are presented under rules established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, also known as GASB. If you flip through the financial statements, you will see a multitude of references to GASB throughout the statements, as they are the agency that dictates how information is reported, how, you know, numbers are reported, what we need to disclose, things like that. There are essentially five components of your financial statements. The first is the auditor's report, and that is the only part of the financial statements that belongs to us. As I mentioned previously, management is responsible for the financial statements, and we're responsible for issuing an opinion on those statements. So that is our audit opinion, or includes our audit opinion. In fiscal year '22, we issued the town an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which means that based on the results of our testing, that we found that the town was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. After that comes management's discussion and analysis, which is a brief overview of the financial statements. It includes some of the key numbers and results of operations from the past fiscal year, and a brief discussion about what's included in the financial statements themselves. Then you have your government-wide statements and your fund basis statements, which we'll talk about and kind of take a look at in just a minute. And lastly, you have your footnotes and your required supplementary information, which go into more detail and kind of provide more explanation about the town, as well as some of the numbers that are reported in the financial statements themselves. So, for instance, you have your pension liability. That is one number in your financial statements, but there is probably seven pages to talk about what that liability is, some of the actuarial assumptions used to calculate the liability, things like that. Does anyone have any questions at this point? I was told to make it quick because the Celtics are on at 8:30, so I'll do my best. It was just a general consensus, I believe, yeah.
I think it might have been, yeah. Before you all came. And just to say, so I hope people -- we didn't bother to print out copies of the audit report, but I'm, you know, follow as best you can. Oh, you have some if we need it, if anybody needs one, but try to follow along. And if you want to orient us toward a particular page number, that would be great.
Sure. We're going to take a look at page 15.
Page 15.
15, which, if you're in the PDF, I think it's going to be 18 of the PDF itself. It's called the balance sheet.
Yep.
Did I get the numbers right there?
Nope, it's 15 in mine.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so this is the balance sheet. It is one of your fund basis statements. Now, your fund basis statements are the set of statements that more closely resemble the town's internal records. So if you're looking at this page, you'll see that there are column headings across the top. The first one says "General Fund." Were you able to find it?
Yes, I was looking at the dump.
Okay, sorry. All right. So that column is actually the town's general fund, as well as your stabilization funds. Probably back in 2011, there was a GASB statement that required the town to consolidate the general fund and your stabilization funds for a financial statement presentation, so that you more closely align with how the states report their rainy day funds, which are also considered a stabilization fund. So if you're looking at that column, that is your general fund and your stabilization funds. To the right of that, you have three major funds. So your community preservation fund, your town grant fund, and your capital project funds. Those are required to be reported separately in this fiscal year because of the -- either the balances in that fund are large enough that it requires to be reported, or there's material activity during the fiscal year. And the last column is your non-major governmental fund, which are the rest of your special revenue or your grant funds, as well as the trust funds for the town, with the exception of your OPEB trust. That's reported separately. Now, if you look towards the bottom left of the page, you'll see a heading in bold called "Fund Balances." And the very last line there, the unassigned fund balance, we're going to take a look at that number. In the general fund, which at the end of fiscal year '22 was just over $1 million, that number is made up of two components. The first is the town's general stabilization fund, which at the end of fiscal year '22 had a balance of just over $412,000. That represents about 2.2% of the town's annual operating budget, which is a little bit on the lower side in terms of what we've seen. I know the town has had, you know, financial issues over the years, so the other portion of that is the general fund, your undesignated fund balance, which is essentially the start of the town's free cash calculation, if you're going to think of it that way. That balance was about $590,000 at the end of fiscal year '22. Now, keep in mind, these are two years old. You guys are always looking forward. We're always looking back. Unfortunately, we're looking back a little bit farther than we like to be at this point in time. But that balance represents just over 3% of the town's annual operating budget. Also, a little bit on the lower side, you know, DOR recommends somewhere between 3% and 5% balance in the certified free cash number, at least that amount. And your free cash was just about 2.5% for fiscal year '22. So a little bit lower. Again, I don't have numbers updated for '23 or '24 at this time, because we haven't looked at those yet, but that's -- that is that.
So on the first number, you said it was 2.2, and that's our cumulative stabilization minus OPEB?
That's your general stabilization fund. That doesn't include your special purpose stabilization funds, your capital project, and your ambulance. So those are reported in the committed line of the $165,000. That is -- that represents those balances.
In communities relative to our size located in western Massachusetts, what's the target range?
Probably over 5%.
Okay.
At least, you know, given economic uncertainty over the past couple of years.
And you said we were about 2%?
2.2.
A little over 2%, yep.
Okay. Yeah. Any questions? Just kind of catch my eye here. Go ahead, Donna. Whatever. Go ahead.
Does anyone have any other questions on that page? That's all I was really going to touch on it. You know, these statements are a couple of years old at this point, but I did want to just kind of focus on some of the key numbers. No? Okay. I'm going to flip back two pages to page 13. And it's titled "The Statement of Net Position Continued." It splits over two pages there. Now, the statement of net position is one of the town's government-wide statements, which essentially take the columns that we just looked at on the previous page, consolidate them all together, and report them as governmental activities. The other column on this page, which is business-type activities, represents the town's enterprise funds, so the water and the transfer station. So your government-wide statements only distinguish between those types of activities. When creating these statements, we take the, you know, the fund basis statements and add numbers such as your long-term capital assets, your long-term liabilities, like your bonds payable, your net pension liability, your net OPEB liability. So it takes your financial statements that are kind of on a cash basis, because that's how you guys operate on a day-to-day basis, and converts them to an accrual basis. So it's meant to show your governmental operations like a business, which is great, but you guys don't really operate day-to-day like a business. So these -- the government-wide statements are great at showing, you know, all the assets, all the liabilities of the town, but they're really not used when you're making day-to-day decisions. So just want to focus, I guess, on a couple numbers on this page, kind of the two of your bigger liabilities. About halfway down the page, under the non-current liabilities, you'll see your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. Now, your net pension liability represents your share of the retirement system's unfunded liability. You are required to fund that. You do have a funding schedule set to be funded, you know, by '20, '30, I think is the official end date that has to be funded by. That balance and that liability was just over $4.4 million at the end of fiscal year '22. That decreased about $1.6 million from the prior year, and the main reason for the decrease was the retirement system itself had good market value results in their calendar year. So as a result, you know, their assets went up and the whole liability went down. So your piece of that liability also went down. Unfortunately, the liability kind of does a little bit of this over the years, given the -- it hinges so much on the market and how well they do in their results of operations. What you're going to see next year, I'm guessing, just given that we've done a bunch of fiscal '23 audits, is that liability is going to spike back up, because the market unfortunately went down, and therefore their liability, or the overall liability, went up. Not that I can predict the future or anything, but I'm guessing that's what I'll tell you next time I do this presentation.
Chris.
Yeah, Reggie, go ahead.
I had seen a schedule that Donna shared with me that kind of said the same thing, that by the year '20, '30, this will kind of slowly get right.
That's the goal. Yep. Right.
The whole system is doing it. I mean, it's for the whole system. Everybody's paying in a little extra there.
Right. So you're paying your normal contribution, and then you're also paying on top of that to get rid of the unfunded liabilities out there. Obviously, that funding schedule is calculated with actuarial assumptions, what the market value is going to do, what rates are going to do, like all the things. You know, there's a lot of things that go into calculating that liability and that funding schedule. It's probably been pushed out a couple of years, you know, from when the time you were a treasurer, so. But that is the ultimate goal. It should be at close to 100% funded, and then you'll only be paying in your current piece of it. There is a schedule at the back of the financial statements that shows what that liability was over the past. It will ultimately be shown over 10 years, but it's probably at like 7 or 8 right now, because we haven't had that many years of it, and kind of what the system, how well the system is funded.
It hasn't really changed. Year to year, basically the same number it was.
I mean, it goes up and down, right? So at the end of fiscal year '22, the system was 78, over 78% funded. And the year before, it was 69, 64, 58. So it is slowly going up, but it kind of does a little bit of this over time. Yeah. Yep. So that is consistent with other systems. You know, everyone kind of saw a decrease in their net pension liability in fiscal year '22, and it'll go up next year, unfortunately. Now, right below that is your net OPEB liability, which had a balance of about $7.8 million at the end of fiscal year '22. And that represents the town's share of retiree health insurance costs. You are not required to fund that liability at this time, unlike the pension liability. You know, you pay as you go. So you're paying for retiree health insurance costs every year. The town has established an OPEB trust fund and put money into that trust, and is contributing a little bit each year, which is good. But there's no requirement to fund it at this time. That liability also decreased about $4.4 million in fiscal year '22. The main reason for that decrease was because your OPEB trust fund is not very well funded. It's like 4% or something like that, I believe. It's the discount rate is tied to the municipal bond rate, and because the bond market went up in fiscal year '22, the discount rate went up, and your liability went down. So they're inversely related there. There was also, similar to the net pension liability, it's, you know, calculated based on actuarial assumptions. So there are certain assumptions that they think are going to happen, and if they don't happen, there are adjustments that happen every year. So there was a big adjustment for what they thought was going to happen to health insurance costs. It didn't quite go up as much as they thought, so there was a big decrease as a result of that as well. So again, this liability can kind of go up and down pretty substantial amounts every year, because there's so many assumptions that are -- that go into calculating this liability as well. So now that you've got to take it with a grain of salt, but you've got to take it with a little bit of grain of salt, and, you know, continue to put money into it. You know, even if it's a small amount, it's a good idea to continue to do that, because most towns are doing that now. So if you're not, that's just, it doesn't look good from a, you know, financial advisor standpoint, or people outside looking in.
And I think you said we were about 4%. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I have that somewhere. 4.2% funded.
And is there sort of a goal of where we might be aiming for, or should be?
Everyone is -- yeah. I mean, everyone's all over the road, to be honest. There are towns that are 100% funded. They, you know, made a concerted effort to do that. Most are 15, maybe it's 20% funded at this point in time. It's really all over the road. It depends on what the town's preferences are. You know, a lot of towns are under the -- or have the idea that once the pension liability, once that contribution goes away, they're going to take that and use that to fund OPEB. You know, once you put it in the OPEB trust fund, it has to be used for retiree health insurance costs. So it's pretty restricted. You can take it out, and I mean, you pay that every year anyways, so you could take it out every year and pay for those costs using that instead of taxation or whatever. But, you know, because it is so restricted, a lot of towns aren't putting a ton of money in there if they don't have a ton of money to put. I mean, you'd be better off putting it into stabilization, because it's much less restrictive. It is a reserve. You know, it can be used for a lot of different things. But--
But the OPEB is really a trust fund, not a stabilization fund?
It is. It is. And it's, and like I said, it can only be used for those purposes, those expenses, so.
So some towns, I think, that do use it for their budget for retiree health insurance, are putting money, more money in, and taking some out, or using it as a checking.
Yeah, and I haven't seen a lot that are actually doing the in and out. They're just continuing to--
But it's really--
Right. Right. But you could, but that's the only thing you can use it for, so.
It's really considered more of a trust fund.
It is a trust fund, yep.
I think the issue there is we need to think of it like winter roads. I mean, once you put the money in, you can't lower that number anymore.
But that's why we made the policy for free cash, to put 10% in.
Oh, yeah.
At least it's not a lot, since our free cash keeps going down. But at least it's--
It went up this year.
At least it's something.
Yeah, right. And that is what matters, I think, at this point, so.
Okay. Good. All right. Go ahead.
Those are the only numbers I was going to talk about on those statements, unless anyone had any other questions there. And that's all I had for the financials, again, unless--
And it might be covered somewhere else.
True.
And I know the numbers are two years old, but based on this, where would I look to see how the transfer station did? What were their excess funds, if any, or deficit?
I would talk to Bradley. Now, to be honest, the -- your enterprise funds are presented on a full accrual basis here. So they're not as meaningful in this financial statement as they are looking at what is actually in the town's general ledger. But there are, they are presented on pages 19 and 20. And, you know, there aren't a ton of adjustments probably for the transfer station, but we still book things like your, its share of the net pension liability. You have a landfill liability, which is out there. You pay a little bit each year, but we accrue that whole liability back. So if you're looking at the bottom line, like what's my fund balance, what do I have, it's not super meaningful. I mean, you can look at the cash balance. You have $44,000 at the end of fiscal '22. That's probably the most meaningful number on those statements, just because of the adjustments we make and how we need to present the enterprise funds in your financials.
Okay.
So.
We talked about during budget season, somewhere in here, I think I saw a figure of $10,000 or something for the landfill monitoring maintenance or something.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's--
That varies from year to year. Am I not right on that? That every couple of years it changes in terms of the amount?
Every few years.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a bigger amount. So we tried to absorb that out of the transfer station enterprise fund this year into our town budget this year, because we thought that was maybe a little bit more realistic.
Right. One of the issues that we're being -- well, you'll get to this with timely financial numbers here, but we're operating under a hypothesis that the transfer station's in trouble. It's negative and upside down, and has been for multiple years, and now we have to deal with it. So--
Yeah. I mean, I feel like it's, you know, we've audited the town for a few years, so it's kind of gone up and down, like it had a good year, and then, you know, all of a sudden, it's just people aren't using it, or people are, you know--
All our dividends from recycling are gone.
Yeah, and that, I'm right--
That's the main, one of the main issues.
Right. Yep.
Question. So Scott mentioned that we don't have a response to some of the issues of the management letter. But what is the answer? What is the response to some of the things they suggested that we correct?
Well, I'm sure this could be more in the management letter. I'm pretty sure--
Oh, that's all.
Yeah, we'll talk -- no, that's fine. Yeah, we can talk about that in a few minutes.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know if there's been any kind of a-- So we were waiting, I think, until this, then we can figure out how to--
Another question, and I knew, but, you know, we're way behind. And it sounds like we were dependent upon the school district to give us--
For Norris. So the elementary school is a department incorporated within here to some degree. And then Hampshire Regional is separate, and they have their own books. But we were, Mickey and Bradley worked pretty much till the 12th hour to figure out the transfers in between those accounts, to be able to close out.
But it does mean the town seems to be dependent on the people at Norris getting the work done.
Well, but they're here in Town Hall.
At the regional.
What the latest production statements was, high school or not?
The closeout for '23 was the high school.
Well, okay. And yes, they had a proportionate responsibility, but the town was behind on things, too. At the end of the day, the business administrator leaving, who'd only been there for seven months, and then the person before him was only there for three months. So a lot of turnover and switch. And then I think one of the solutions when we get to the management letter, is we get there, is that once we can clean up the backlog internally here, which will take time, but will get done, it's then putting in whatever processes through the TA to make sure that we're balancing on a monthly or quarterly basis at the school side, to get that information.
So are we, I mean, where are we for '23? So now we're--
From the school side? I can say for Norris's side, at the end of '23, at our, no, at the end of '24, we voted on all those line-down transfers for '23 and '24 last week.
But where are we for as far as closing stuff, so that the audit can be performed?
'23 is closed. Am I not right? Yeah. The books for '23 are closed, so it's a matter of-- Yeah, the books for '23 are closed, so it's a matter of, we already signed the, the audit engagement letter many, many months ago. So now it's a time to, to get started on '23. And we're definitely behind the eight ball, but we're going to be catching up.
I mean, as soon as you guys have that stuff, we can get started on it and get it wrapped up. So, yeah, I mean, definitely, we started the '22 audit in May of 2023. So, you know, that was a little bit delayed from what it normally is, although the town is usually a spring client, usually April timeframe, try to get it done by June, just for, you know, financial advisor purposes, end of June. But that, you know, so much turnover everywhere really is, you know, definitely part of it. The town, we'll talk about it in a minute, but was required to have federal grant audits in fiscal '22 as well. That's not typical because you had so much federal money. So that was additional testing, and we needed information from the school and the town for those. So, you know, that was a little bit more work and different things we requested for that audit. So it was a little bit of a perfect storm of everything, unfortunately, in '22.
Some of that was for the school aid money that came in, and then some of it was the CARES money, not, not the current ARPA money, although I guess it maybe folded in.
Yeah.
It was under the CARES Act.
There was CARES Act money, there was ARPA money, there was additional federal school lunch money in 2022 because they, you know, it was all free lunch, but it came through the federal...
What's the dollar amount that triggers that, right? It's, it's, once you get to a certain level?
Yep, $750,000 in federal expenditures.
So we had not ever been at that level until just this past...
Yeah, we've done it maybe once before with, like, either CBG grant or...
Maybe long time.
USDA loan.
Well, I mean, when we get there, but looking at the, because school lunches is here to stay.
No, that won't, that won't be as much federal money in future years because...
Coming from the state.
Yes, it comes from the state. Yes, going forward. But that year it was exceptionally high because of the free lunch, universal free lunch, and it all came from federal essentially that year. So that kicked a lot of people up over. That with ARPA and CARES, FEMA, all the, all those fun things.
Yep.
It is 750. It's anticipated to go up to a million in fiscal year '25, I believe. So that'll ease, ease the burden a little bit on some of the towns that, you know, maybe get a little bit extra, but not, not quite that much, so that will be good.
Because our statements are late, does it affect our, do we have a rating from S and P still? Is it active?
I think it's a double A negative, is it?
We only have rating on our current funds that are early issued. We don't have a rating that's active for future...
We don't have rating, okay.
My question is, if we wanted to borrow a ton of money for under the public safety fund, would anybody lend it to us because of the staleness of the state?
I think we need to work to get our rating back and go through that. It was lost when I was here because the audits weren't, we didn't have the audits done one year. The select board at that time didn't do the, didn't have an audit done every year. It was before we had the bio office that we need to do an audit every year. And so then we lost our rating because we didn't have the audit, and we got it back. Like, we have to go through an interview process and everything to get it back.
Depending on the value of the size that you want to issue, the town has, to MFOB, can borrow through the state, one notch below the state's rating, through the Treasury Office. If we're doing 40 or 60 million dollars, that may be a different story, but...
The financial advisor generally would not recommend properly something that's going through the state.
Agreed. But it's also, those are unique circumstances when we build these things. Normally, it's a million dollars for a bridge or something like that. And so there, depending on the dollar amount, money is easily accessible without going through the hoops of the rating. But if we're going to go for the big projects, do we have to do it? And then do we commit to continuing that rating as we go on? Because there's a cost, right?
Right, I mean, at this point in time, most towns that have the same fiscal year end as you are done, have an audit done through 63023, which if we can get tho, you know, those numbers soon, like, I'd, I'd like to get this finalized first before we move on to '23, but now is the time to do it, like, before we jump into the fiscal '24 audits that we're going to be starting in a couple of months, so...
So one question on that. If you're sitting on this side of the table, all right, and then you receive notice that field work has started, or whatever the initiation is hard, what is a realistic expectation for us to market our calendar to keep checking in with everybody to make sure it's going? Because the select board's not going to be day to day there. We're not going to see all the emails. You know, is it 60-day window fair? Is it 90?
I mean, at this point in time, if we have OPEB, to be OPEB, and we have pension, because that's obviously been done at this point in time, and those are kind of the things that usually hold up numbers, but if we have all that information, it can get done very quickly. It's just usually we're waiting on the retirement system numbers or an OPEB update because everyone sends their information to the actuary at the same time, and then you get put on a waiting list. So, you know, we can do a lot without those, but like, obviously, we can't do financial statements. But if the town's ready and proactive and responsive, you know, we can, we have weeks available now and staff available that we could get through it very quickly, so...
Depending on what's ready, I mean, I think we should...
Right. Okay.
Because I think, you know, '24 is right around the corner here.
I know.
And we don't know if '23, that we may be triggered again with the 750. I'm not sure.
I, I haven't looked at any numbers yet for '23.
Not sure where our federal grants are this time around. Approaching it when you add the school in there, I wouldn't doubt it.
Right, right.
Because, yeah, actually, no, it should be, because we've got American Rescue Plan money, yeah, again. I mean, it was part of that, you know, the whole package. We had four different tranches of it, but we got 1.8 million over two years.
Right, but when did you spend it? I guess that's the bigger question.
We started obligating it in '22, which is part of what you just audited, and then we've started obligating, and we continued obligating it in '23, fiscal '23 into the beginning of '24, fiscal '24.
So, yeah, you might need a...
Probably so, yeah. That's a bound question.
Yep, and we'll look at that. We can figure that out pretty easily once we get the numbers from the town, because there's only so many pots of money that are federal, so...
And with that, like, on this time, you, you just, you weren't auditing a specific award that we did. You were looking at our, I gather it was reporting that we fell short on in terms of reporting back to the feds in terms of how we had allocated some of the money, or...
Um, a couple of things there. So we...
Jumping ahead, sorry.
That's fine. We can, we can skip to that. It doesn't really matter what order we do this. So we can look at your, your single audit report. So it's a separate statement. It's titled Independent Auditor Support on Government Auditing Standards and Uniform Guidance. So this, this report on page seven, I'm not sure what page of the PDF it is, but it's titled The Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. So, you know, we review the town's general ledger, and we also get information from the school department on, you know, the elementary schools' federal expenditures. So we're not auditing the district, we're just auditing the town's elementary school that the district staff is responsible for keeping the general ledger for, but that also flows through the town's general ledger as well, so... So that's your, your listing of what your federal funds expended in fiscal year '22 were. Like, we were talking about the school lunch program, the cash assistance number was 198,000. That's much higher than it's been in the past, and that's kind of an anomaly because of the universal free lunch program and the fact it was all funded through the federal government as opposed to a combination of federal state. And then in the U.S. Department of Treasury, you'll have your coronavirus relief fund, which is your CARES money of just over 100,000, and the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, the ARPA money, and then, you know, your other, other grants there for the school department, which, for the most part, are consistent from year to year. There is, you'll see the COVID-19 elementary and secondary school emergency relief, which is your S R money. They'll probably be a little bit of that in fiscal year '23 as well, depending on when and how they spent that. So it's likely you're going to be over 750 again in, in fiscal '23, if there is another couple hundred thousand of ARPA at least, you know, combined with the other components here.
Yeah. So... This CARES money was really a challenge for them. We, internally, we put more processes in place for the American Rescue Plan money going forward compared to the CARES money that kind of dropped out of the sky, and we didn't really know what we would have to spend it on. It was tough. It was a lot of equipment, a lot of stuff during COVID that, you know, a lot of decisions were made that were kind of, you know, challenging, having to double check, and some of it was supposed to be reimbursed by FEMA, and then that percentage changed.
Oh, they overcomplicated that, like...
It was crazy, so...
Way more than they needed to. It, yeah, you weren't the only people that struggled with that, trust me. Right, so, you know, based on this schedule, you know, we have to analyze it and take a look at, you know, what we're required to audit because ARPA was such a big number, and it's a higher risk program because it's new, it's related to the pandemic, you know, we had to audit ARPA. And we also had to audit the school lunch program as well. So those are the two federal grants that we audited in fiscal year '22. So some of the work we had to do was with the school, the school department, the school lunch department. We have to obtain records from them. And then the ARPA funds, you know, was, was more on the town side, obtaining documents and reports and, and things like that from the town. So just, you know, generally, in terms of your federal grant audits, the federal government, you know, dictates us what we need to audit, what we need to look at for these types of grants. Whether it's reporting, we're always looking at what the expenditures are, so what is spent out of the school lunch fund, making sure it's an allowable cost for that grant. Same with ARPA, looking at what's spent there. So that kind of drives what we test and how we, how we test things. So if you look at the findings, because there was a couple, those are based on, you know, the federal government says we need to test this, this is what we looked at, and we either didn't find it, or there was an issue with what we, what we looked at. We did not end up having any issues with the school lunch grant. It was kind of painful to get the information, but when we did get it, it was fine. We did have issues with the ARPA grant. And if you're looking at, if you're scrolling through the report, there's a Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. We did, we do have to report the material weakness that we'll talk about in a minute related to cash and receivable reconciliations. That has to go in this report, so that you'll see that first, the financial statement finding there. But there's also the federal award finding for, for the ARPA fund in terms of, we could not be provided the report that was required to be filed for April 30th of the year we were auditing, so...
Page nine, if anybody found it.
So has that report been filed since?
I don't know. We haven't gotten the town's response.
I have no idea. It would have been done by the former town administrator side.
Right, so that's required to be filed April 30th every year.
I guess, because we can probably go online, do a public search and see whether it's there or not. Because this is just going to repeat itself when you get into '23.
Right. Right, because we do, we are required to follow up on the findings and the issues that were noted, and we will likely have to audit ARPA again in fiscal year '23 if it was kind of as much as you said there is.
So this was reported due April 30th, '22.
The one of '22 is what, the one we inquired about. It would have had to get filed for '23, and at this point, April 2024 as well.
Yep, we can certainly figure that out.
Continue to have a qualified opinion if the prior reports are unfiled?
So if we tested, yeah, if we tested ARPA again in '23 and the report's still not filed, we would just continue to have a qualified opinion. If it was filed, filed late, there's a little bit of, you know, leeway there probably, but, I mean, technically, it's supposed to be filed by April 30th. So, you know, we'll work with the town on what happened there. And there was also a finding, you know, unfortunately, because the town doesn't usually need to have a federal grant audit, we don't usually inquire whether there's formal policies and procedures over federal grant processes and procedures. So there was a finding related to that as well. There are examples out there that we can provide if the town wants to kind of use it as a starting point to adopt those. It's basically, you know, what's the process for making sure that only allowable cost gets charged to a federal grant and other things of that nature that relate to the different components the federal government thinks are important for federal grants.
It's in the hard policies that were already written that we could adopt.
There, yeah, we could, we could send a few examples that the town could. Because, I mean, it's, it's not, you're not, you don't need to reinvent the wheel, like, there's...
You have other clients that you can...
Right, we can share that. Yes.
So who was actually charged producing these reports that we didn't file? Is that something in Scott's world?
It would, yeah, it would have been at the town administrator level, so prior to Scott. Yep, yep. As far as that...
Right, every town is a little bit different, but yes.
I mean, he's got to get the figures from, from Bradley, depending on what the report requires. I don't even know, but, yeah, I've never seen that.
This is one of the other areas where we've talked about, like, one example was we should have a shared written calendar, you know, by level, these are the special due dates, you know. The DLS prints them all out for us anyways, and if we have it, then it's on our radar to say, oh, we're supposed to have this. You know, example, if we end up getting July 1st, if we get the federal tanker, right? I imagine that $650,000 contribution is going to trigger...
That alone will take us right over the 750 for the, for fiscal '24.
Right, so not having these reports on file, I don't want it to be a dinger.
Sure, sure.
You know?
Yep, no, that's something we definitely need to check through. I'm sure it must be unfiled someplace, whether, we can find out whether it's been filed.
And I don't know, have you logged on to the, okay, you were, because it's a pain too if you're not the original, you have to, like, email. Yeah, okay, yeah, that was, that's always fun. It's a process there, so that's good. At least you can log in and see what should be there.
Yeah, well, I think too, we had, just for your information, we'd, we'd had a bunch of old select board policies on a variety of things that had not been updated since about 2017, 18, and we, we took a whack at those a couple of years ago and updated everything we had, but didn't know that we had to work on writing new policies or adopting new policies. So we've got another four or five, I'm sure, that we have to do based on the findings here.
Right, I mean, the town does have federal money every year, it's just, you know, sometimes it doesn't raise to the point where we need to, to look at it from that perspective. Obviously, the, it's included in the town audit overall, and we do look at things, but not as much in detail as if we did a federal grant audit specifically, so...
You're one of those reports you only have to do if you cross the threshold.
Yep. Yep, no one wants to do them if they don't have to do them. Okay, so does anyone have any other questions on that report?
I think on page 10, you, you put out some, some basic things in terms of our reconciliation problems, so I think that's something we need to pay attention to.
Yes, yes, and that, that issue is also reported in the management letter. We did put it in both places, you know, we don't really have to, but, you know, for fiscal year '22, reconciliations were fairly on track, but once, you know, getting into fiscal '23, when we come out to do our audit testing and inquire, like, what, you know, it's, it's May 2023, what month have you reconciled cash through? And, you know, the response was October. So that's concerning. I know this isn't really a fiscal '22 issue, but from our perspective, it should be reconciled on a monthly basis, and I couldn't just ignore the fact that at that point in time, when we're asking about it, it's, you know, that far behind. And I understand the reasons for it, it's just, it's still a concern from our perspective. You know, if you're not reconciling your largest assets on a monthly basis, that's, you know, something could...
But I think at one point, we were hoping too to have maybe quarterly meetings for the board and finance to go through over, just in general, the status of the financial reports expenditure and, and revenue reports, which we haven't really put in place, but that was going to be kind of a, another check that we had talked about, looking at it quarterly together and to say, okay, are there some, some things here that we're questioning just in terms of expenses or revenue that we might know that, you know, maybe isn't being captured or something like that? So it's something we all have tried, maybe formalize a little bit for the coming fiscal year if we can.
Going forward, that's good. Where we were, we didn't have anything to evaluate, and we've got to get a process in place.
Right.
Same, same difficulty and visibility on the finance committee side. We had requests coming through about expenditures, and we could report to the balances of the[1766.12] We had requests coming through about expenditures and we could report to the balance of the accounts.
Right. And I know, you know, Jen reconciled her records internally, you know, her bank statements to her cash book and things like that. But it also needs to get reconciled to the general ledger as well. So that's really where the the missing piece was. And again, it was because everything was just so far behind, you can't do it.
Right. And the town spent a lot of money to bring in outside resources.
Right.
Right, wrong, or indifferent on their effectiveness to get up to speed. And we just need to figure out a way to continually fall behind. But it goes across all departments. I mean, it's not, they're sitting here because they're part of the finance team, but it's not solely on their shoulders. You know, the school, the lunch program, everybody needs to, you know, accountability. And I go back to, you know, if it's written down and we have a schedule, then we have ability to force it. Or, you know, September 30th, where's that report? Is that any other? And by the time we're asking the question, it's probably too late.
Yeah.
I mean, part of it is too, you know, we started the audit in May of last year. And then we get to a certain point where we're busy with the audits that we have currently scheduled that are on time. So we may follow up with departments here or there, but we're not, like, we, we can't prioritize, you know, the audit that didn't give us what we needed when we asked for it, unfortunately. So that doesn't help either, but.
If we call for the audit, we should have everything ready.
Right.
Yeah. And then it's just a matter of follow up questions. Or can you, can you show me the backup for this, you know, whatever your random sampling is?
Yeah. Yeah. So. Okay. So yes, the last report is the management letter. Again, we, you know, we've talked about the cash reconciliation, receivable reconciliation issues and the kind of reasons for that. You know, we have a couple of sentences in there highlighted. I was hoping to just get an update on where things stand, I guess, to make it more, like, we're issuing the report in June of 2024 and we have fieldwork as of May. So if you guys can provide us with that, just so we have more updated information. You know, we found a couple of issues when we, we take a look at the budget itself, you know, we take a look at the town meeting votes and trace things out to the recap and then trace them also to the town's general ledger to see what was recorded for budgeted items. And there was a couple of issues noted there. None of them are very big issues, but just because there was a handful of them, we just noted, noted them in the second comment there. And then the last was, you know, formally adopt the OPEB declaration of trust, which I don't know if the town has done that at this point in time. Okay. So again, not a huge issue, but it just, you know, was recommended by the state a few years ago now. And the town should really re-adopt that with the new verbiage. So.
Could you just explain a little bit on that page about the, the amounts in the general ledger not agreeing to the tax recap on, on the water, the water fund in particular? What, what impact does that have? What, what's the seriousness of that?
So I don't know exactly which direction this issue went, but for instance, when you vote at town meeting, you vote, this is how much we're going to expend related to water expenses. That number goes on the recap. You voted it, you're going to fund it from user charges. And then that expense budget needs to go in the general ledger to make sure you don't overexpend what was voted by town meeting. So there was a difference in, in those amounts. So all three of them should, should tie out.
Any other comments, questions over there?
Questions. So how are we doing today as far as monthly reconciliations?
I believe.
Better than we were.
Better than when you were doing your examination, but not, not up to date. No.
Can we put it on the record verbally what it is? I mean, I saw Scott nod his head.
I believe it's the end of February. We have our revenue unless it's changed since then. So expenses are, I think are pretty up to date, but revenues are still probably three months behind.
In terms of recording the receipts in the general ledger?
So we have, Bradley and I reconciled through February. I'm currently entering March revenue.
Okay. That's, yeah, that's better.
I mean, I think internally, our goal has been probably a six week lag time.
Yeah.
That's what we've been wanting to aim for. We've been saying it, want to aim for it. So whatever we can do to make that.
But we, but we do think expenses are current as of the last warrant run?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, expenses aren't usually the issue. It's usually getting the receipts and that posted in there and then reconciling overall.
We're going to be taking up an awful lot of transfers here.
Yeah. Not many time a check is cut, it should go into the. Unless it's a manual check, which hopefully there aren't a lot of those. So, yeah. No, none of those. Yeah.
So our, our next step is to do responses to this audit and get them to you. So we need to commit ourselves on in terms of what timeframe we're going to get these done. What's realistic? End of the month before the, before the new fiscal year? Can we try that? I don't know. I'm just pointing out something. Just so that we can at least close this off so that then Markman crew can take a look at, at 23. And then whatever we've got to get ready to give to them for 23, that, you know, to the extent, to the extent it's ready, or if there's something more that has to get ready, that we make that a priority as well.
I believe the only responses that we, that we have to answer are the federal audit, single audit, right? The other ones would be nice to have. But I would say we focus on the federal audit so everything can get closed. And it's one week from tomorrow night. Where, you know, I mean, we don't, you don't need volumes of information.
No, it's, it's pretty generic. I think we sent you guys, the format needs to go in. You have to list the finding number and then, you know, how you're going to resolve it and who they, you have to specifically state who is going to be responsible for basically overseeing that it gets done. And the estimated date. But again, it, it doesn't have to be a novel, short and sweet.
Yeah. The thing on the reconciliations, it's a known issue. We're addressing it. We know it's going to come up again on the next audit. So make sure the wording is worded that.
Yeah, will be resolved at the, you know, early fiscal year 25 or whatever, that kind of thing. Yeah. I mean.
Checking on the federal audit timeframe in terms of the report, the report that was, and is that only an annual report, April? That's, that's, it's not a quarterly report.
No, it was just one, one report.
Okay. So we ought to be able to check on that and figure out where that is last time as well as going forward.
Right.
So I'm thinking we ought to be able to.
So process wise, because I would think that the team prepares the responses. The responses then are, well, we have full committees now. I know we vote to approve the responses before they get sent in. So I mean, I would just, you know, if we're going to want finance the way, you know, so that we're all on the same page. That's possibly a Zoom meeting. Right?
We can figure out something. Yeah. No, I think it would be good if everybody had a chance to take a look at the responses for sure before they go in. Yeah. So let's, let's make the end of the month as our goal at the latest.
Because I also heard Tanya say she only has three open weeks right now. You know, their cycle's going to start all over.
I didn't say that, but yes, we will, we will get busy towards the end of summer. So the sooner we can get this done and get on with 23, the faster we'll wrap that up. So.
We'll certainly do our best to do that. We have a special town election coming up next week. So that's been taking up a lot of time.
Yeah.
But hopefully we're past that hurdle for a minute anyway. So we can pick this up. Good. Any other questions, guys, from, from you all on this? Thoughts, recommendations? I know Doug, you've done lots of audits in your own personal job, life. Any other thoughts that might be recommendations for us too that?
I think it would be good to see some of the other town examples and some of the internal control.
I can send those.
Be good. Yeah. I mean, I think you're right. We don't need to reinvent anything. We ought to be able to adopt other policies from other towns and make it, you know, fit Southampton, I think.
Exactly. Yep.
Good. Well, if there's no other comments, questions, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Coming in and taking the time. Much appreciated.
I don't know what time it is, but it's got to be before 8:30.
7:30 on the dot.
Somebody took all the clocks.
7:30 on the dot. You are good.
Have a great night.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Very good. Okay. Next, we have only one or two small items here, or maybe we got too small, but we'll see. We have some end of year transfers. This is kind of the the time of the year where we're allowed to do transfers in between departments here. And so everybody's got some of these in front of you. Trying to think, I think I would like to have, we can kind of go through, they're sort of in a, well, they aren't really in a category. I thought they were. They aren't really. A little bit they are. I guess kind of go through each one, see if there's any question, discussion from anybody, any explanation that we might have to answer any questions. And then what we'll end up doing probably as I would think have finance do a vote first and then select board take a vote based on that afterwards. How's that work? I think this is the first time we've been together to do a transfer vote, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think we did this last year, that we were together to do the vote for transfers. I assume, yeah. I'm assuming these are not the only transfers.
Yeah. We've got a few from like the town clerk for the special.
Some other, some other transfers. Okay. So let's pick up the first one. So overdrawn accounts. So ambulance maintenance, $9,500. The request is to take it from EMT wages. Any comment, thought, question on that? And this is because I'm sure we haven't, at the time anyway, had not been, we definitely don't have those two positions that we had approved in the last budget year filled yet. And we were waiting to hear from the chief where we are status wise in terms of recruiting the paramedic, paramedics that we had approved. So I'm sure that's why we have excess money there. Is that correct?
Yeah. And it looks like it was spent because one of the ambulants lost AC and the other one, exhaust system issue.
Yeah.
But it's not quite getting up to, the AC was only like $3,000.
Yeah. I didn't catch the, where the total of the 9,500 came from. I was trying.
4,500 is to fix the ambulance AC and exhaust system.
I'm sorry, 4,500?
4,500. And then it looks like another $846 on tires.
Tires? Tires, maybe? Yeah.
That's all the backup that's in there.
Okay. It's a request for $9,500.
So the math guy in me tells me $9,500 is a fake number. I mean, because look at the next line, $2,315.63. But if there's unknown receipts coming in or whatever over the next two weeks, maybe another, maybe he just wants extra money in there and gets another receipt comes in or another bill, something else he has to pay.
Because seeing definitely the one bill, in terms of backup we have anyway, for about $3,829 and then.
Yeah, I think the third page summarizes that one.
4,514. So those are two separate bills. All right. Yeah, it's not exactly 9,500. I'm not sure where we're coming up with that. But any further idea? There may be more ambulance repairs that haven't hit the.
I mean, my take is it's ambulance receipts to ambulance expenses.
Yeah. All right. Do we want to?
Do we want to discuss them and then kind of?
Maybe come back on the whole. I think that's probably, that's probably most sufficient. So why don't we do that? So if nobody has any questions, any further thoughts? Let's pass on and we'll see if Scott can help us with some of these others here. So photocopier leasing supplies. Need $2,315.63 to come from the group health insurance. So other expenses, any explanations on some of those or?
We actually had two photocopiers on lease. We were paying about a little over $200 a month for one that we weren't using. We were able to finally contact the company after a couple of months. And this is just to settle up the bill. So they've actually taken back the copier that was under lease. So this is to clear that out.
Okay. Yeah, I think we had ordered a new copier. I didn't realize we hadn't gotten rid of the old one yet. Okay, good. Okay. So that's the explanation there. 2,300. So this ends up that, that bill for the old copier that is now no longer with us.
Was that early termination of a lease? Did the length of lease go beyond, you know, so?
Nope, we were just paying it.
But it was on the budget? Which department had the lease?
TA.
General Town Hall. Yeah. Yeah, would have been the one in the break room. Was it a different, it was a different brand? Was it a different company?
Right. It was a different, it was a different company that we used.
So, yeah. Okay.
So the, the, we're not going to have an issue, I don't know, again, without seeing the backup. We're not going to have an issue here with paying prior year bill. Were those, those $2,300 in charges all actually occurred in fiscal year 24?
Yes.
I think this was discovered when Scott came on, right?
But it's $200 a month. You're $2,300.
And a little bit of change, you know, there were some fees associated with it. So this would be able to get us off of that old lease.
But basically nothing, you're asking, is there any, any charges back to FY '23? Is that your question?
Right. Because that requires a separate vote.
Yeah. Okay. 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 We will move forward. Library utilities, $2,555.76. Again, taking that proposed to take it from the group health insurance. And this is basically electricity costs? Or do we know anything more than that?
They're mostly from the electrical credit transfers that we have to do for the cow pow and NMC credits, things that pay a bill for the whole town. And then we distribute it between the departments. And library's really been hit a lot with these charges. So I've calculated and said that's what we, at the very least, we need right now to cover the three invoices.
And will there be other departments?
I checked the other departments and everyone else seems pretty fine, pretty decent shape for the rest of the year.
Interesting. Wonder why. I mean, we're, we're going to be sweeping out hopefully some of those lights through the green, green community grant. That might be part of it, but.
The library during that year though, the library might have used some of the utility money when they had the furnace issues.
Perhaps. I don't know. No clue. Okay. Anyway, that's the request for library utilities. Council on Aging Expenses, $1,300 to come from Council on Aging Wages. The note here is to come from wages to expenses due to the position not being filled for the entirety of the year. So I think this is where, even when we had the budget presentation, the directors told us that there was like a couple hundred dollars left or something in expenses. So we've incurred more expenses than they had planned on when they had put the budget together a few, many months ago. So this is taking it from within their own accounts for $1,300 to get through the fiscal year, from what I understand. Anything?
We'll say that explanation seems to be in reverse. Is that explaining the additional expenses? Just saying, hey, by the way, we have these tax funds because it seems, yeah.
Yeah. It's a justification for why they're taking it from where. Yeah. 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 I'm not sure what they, what people were asked to, to present. It's more like, you know, what, the way it's listed here anyway, it's overdrawn. And then where's the source of funds? So exactly, it's not saying why, why things are expensive. We don't have a whole lot of backup on all these requests.
I didn't go into great detail, but I mean, Bradley sent out the communication that normally goes out. Here's the form, here's the memo, here's what you need to provide. So if they didn't, right? Isn't that on your list?
Yes, but Council on Aging was one of the only ones that did give an explanation. That was their explanation. So I used it. For the other ones, I did very generic explanations, which I should have thought for more, but the way the file is set up, it's confusing. People that each line has a letter assigned to it and then below the letter has the explanation. Often people will just give the number and the source and account they want to increase and they don't put an explanation.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So are these actual overdrawn accounts, accounts that we assume will be overdrawn by the end of the year? Or accounts that we want to overdraw?
No. These are, are they currently or they're projected to be?
The only account that's currently overdrawn is the Town Hall Utilities. No, no longer is it overdrawn. It used to be overdrawn, the Utilities Account for the Town Hall, because I have to do transfers to move the credits around to all the departments. But now I put through those transfers. So right now, the only account here is the Library Utilities Account is overextended because of my journal entries. But every other account has enough, like at least a few hundred dollars available, but everyone's expecting to overdraw it. So before that happens, we need these transfers to go through.
So these are projected expenses still between, well, whenever this was put together and before the end of the, the end of the fiscal year.
So just, so we jump, based on that, Bradley, if we jump back up to the fire department, the receipts, they're not receipts, I guess, the invoice is in here from Ford for the 4,514. Are you holding payment on that one?
I believe, I don't believe I pulled any invoices, but if they. I believe, I don't believe I hold any invoices, but if there is an account that I know is going to be in deficit, I let the department head know that I'm not going to be paying this and request the transfer to cover this before I pay it, and then we, before we have a deficit issue.
So I guess it goes back to Becky's question. Do we really, I'm trying to find the date in, this was January seventeenth.
When they had to get charged?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was, it was May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Right now, ambulance.
And we paid cash.
Ambulance maintenance right now has eleven dollars, forty-seven cents available.
Okay.
And I stopped them from using it.
And has this been?
Yeah, is that balance before or after this invoice from?
We haven't paid that invoice.
Yeah. So there wasn't enough money to pay that invoice. So now with the transfer, that invoice can be paid. Okay. All right, next up, library wages, five hundred dollars to come from library expenses. Um, and again, to ensure there's enough for library wages. So I don't know what other commentary there is there. It's, is there anything more? Was there any, um, additional staffing, or I don't know, the hourly wage changed, or?
I was just saying she wanted to be safe. Right now, we just have six thousand seven dollars available. So there's a payroll this week, another payroll, and then a final one at the end of the month. So, just to be safe for three payrolls, it would cut close, and she wants to just put a little extra money in there to be safe and go over expense.
Okay. And again, coming from their own accounts.
So maybe, if we have to meet again, because we have up until July fifteenth to do these transfers.
Right.
I mean, if the library utilities one is legitimate, and then, um, I would assume the other one that's legitimate is Winter Roads, right? That's just balancing out those two accounts. You know, so I'm good with that. I'm good with the library. And the ambulance, I'd be good with what these invoices support. And then, let's see how it falls out, and we can come back again. I mean, it's not necessarily, I don't see the, the logic behind, within the department, taking the money out of here and putting it up there, because we're going to see that as a single line item, and when we come to budget session again, next cycle around, it's not going to be like, well, how come we put extra money in it? If it's in deficit, it's in deficit, and we need to clean those up. But, um...
Yeah. Well, usually...
And I would, I'm sorry, and then I would say is, what documentation can be provided to support whatever the request is? So, the forty-five, forty-five hundred in here and plus whatever the tires are, you know, I would adjust that ninety-five hundred dollar number, because we have supporting documents to justify that transfer. And then, the library, based on, um, journal entries that Bradley did relate to the cowplops, so we know that that's an issue. And he has his journal entries that back up that number. And then the Winter Road transfer, to get, to get those two accounts, um, balanced. And there's still extra money in there within Winter Roads, CPW.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, normally, we do, if I recall, last year, we did at least, at least four different transfers, four different sets of, of transfers at the end of the year. So this is probably taking a whole bunch of them all at once, whereas we might have broken these down into smaller bunches last time around. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
But we will have another time or two before we do this.
Right. And I think it's appropriate to, to get the detail that backs it up, so we can spot check the things and do our fiduciary part.
Mm-hmm.
The other, I could make the argument the other way, that department heads are just trying to make sure the money's there, so July first, they're out the door for the holiday week.
Yeah, and they're trying not to overspend, yeah, exactly.
Well, and if we had a purchase order system, wouldn't allow deficit spending to start with.
Well, and that's.
On the list.
Going to be on the list for, for July.
I don't know that it's active.
My question's on payroll accounts. Say, we have to pay these employees at the end of the month, and they don't have enough money to pay out of the account.
Right.
I would assume we would let them deficit spend to pay the employees. We're not going to hold off on paying.
Do you do a year-end accrual? Because, because, I don't know, I mean, Jen's payroll, but do, do the last paycheck for this fiscal year, is that cut on June thirtieth, or doesn't some of it roll into July?
It's, well, July third should be the payroll date.
Yeah, it's a couple of days.
Thirty, and so Sunday.
Right, so there's an accrual there.
Cycles. So...
So there's a final payroll for a couple of days or something. It's there for, uh, July. There's a final payroll warrant, right, for a couple of days in July, is there not?
But...
No?
No.
No?
Well, is it the three or twenty-four payroll in your heart?
Yes.
Yeah.
But if, I'm assuming that the library is concerned about substitute, right, because that's an unknown. But almost every, everybody else has, you get, whether it's two hundred sixty-one days of pay, or whatever the case is, calculate it down. And then, to your question about that we would pay them or not, I think in the library, hey, you're short four hundred bucks, but you've got it over here on this line item. You need to do this transfer in order to get the payroll done, right? And then based on you having the paperwork, they would probably go through and just put it through without the vote in order to meet the payroll. But...
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know.
There's a policy on this.
Yeah. Well, and in, you know, in reality, I mean, we're not, we hadn't planned on meeting again, so we were trying to take advantage of having finance with us tonight, because we wouldn't be meeting again before our July ninth meeting normally, unless we'd have to for something. So that was why we were trying to push these through tonight.
I don't really care. We want to work with moving five hundred, and it's going to end up, but it just seems like you might be doing more than it does need to be done.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. The other line item that I'm, I'm not having memory recall, why, why are we over seventy-five hundred dollars in legal expenses?
Oh.
Is that, is that the enforcement?
A large part has been enforcement for some of the properties that we haven't usually had to deal with. So some of the, um, yeah, and I would say that's got to be part of it.
And the land transfers as well?
Uh, some of the land transfer on the special election, but, but I think part of it is, is been a lot of the Board of Health enforcement issues that we've dealt with three or four different properties around town. So that hadn't been, that's been, not been a normal expense that we've incurred.
Well, and the same issue is driving the Board of Health agent expense. And yet, I'm very confused by the email presentation, which is already several weeks old. So I'd like that rationale made plenty. I understand that they're going, they're expecting a big bill, but they represent that they know sixty-three hundred will cover it, but they don't address whether they're going to apply the existing balance. I, I can't follow the request.
What is the existing, well, we skipped around.
Two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-four cents.
So there may be a warrant that's in process, maybe? I don't know, that hasn't hit there yet, or?
Two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-four cents is available in BOH contracted expenses. So they would expend out that, and they want an additional sixty-five hundred.
So they're anticipating nine thousand dollars for sixty-three hundred?
Yeah, sixty-three hundred, yeah, right, exactly.
Talking about unusual expense in May and June invoice, on May thirtieth, it's unclear what invoice is in hand and what's just conjecture.
Is there a, is there a sixty-day delay, and would we receive invoices from that contracted person?
I bet you there's a thirty-month, thirty-day, thirty, thirty-day delay.
We may have the May invoice right now, but we haven't paid it.
Right.
And we're waiting for a transfer to have enough money to pay that.
That's where I think some of these are, where stuff has been kind of hanging out there, and we haven't, I mean, this is the first time we've sat down to look at transfers. So, yeah. So there's, so that's the, the legal, legal one. There's, just going back up, I don't know if you want to just continue going down these. I mean, the Winter Roads expense, so the forty-three, three seventy-one and thirty-two dollars coming from Winter Road Rages, I think that's the one we've not been surprised at. That's kind of an every-year scenario, and they're, they're really...
The expense account was expended by that amount.
Right.
It's already been funded by that.
Contractors replacing our lack of workforce.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, well, in overtime, but the, um...
Part of this is...
The positive there is those two line items are supporting themselves.
Right.
Randall isn't having to strip down any other section of his budget to make that balance, which is important.
Yeah. Yeah. So a large part of that is all of our salt and all the other sand and everything else we use for the winter road treatments, yeah. Uh, library maintenance, a thousand forty-four and eighteen cents coming from group health insurance. I'm just going to read these. Legal expense, seventy-five hundred from group health, um, group health insurance. Technology services, a thousand dollars from group health insurance and Board of Health contracted services, sixty-three hundred from group health insurance. So, a lot of money coming out of group health insurance, which I know that varies from year to year. We seem to be dipping into that piggy bank quite a bit this year.
I didn't let her see if there was enough, not sure.
So, well, I'm sure somebody must have, or we wouldn't have put it forward. So, go ahead, Brad.
What percentage of this, you know, budget and offset mix up?
Yeah. Tell you how much percentage.
Be sure there's...
I mean, that's, out of this, out of this list, we've got six things taken out of group health insurance.
The original budget for group health insurance, well, after adjustment, was nine hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred, nine hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars, thirty-five cents. Right now, we have eighty percent of that spent, so twenty percent remains for the rest of the year. And when I forecasted last month, I expected at least a hundred thousand to be available at the end of the year. There's a hundred ninety-two thousand right now.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So you're comfortable that there's money available to be taken from that account?
The way I forecasted was I looked at every month up until May, and I saw which month had the most expended, and then I projected that. That expense was every month for the remainder of the year, to be safe.
Okay.
Last June is two hundred thousand or something ridiculous.
Yeah.
Which I don't expect it to be.
Okay.
Safe.
All right. So the legal expenses, as we were talking about, I think part of that is not only some of our, our land transfer issues with the Landscape Partnership Grant, as well as the special election land, as well as the, um, property issues that we've had with various properties that the Board of Health has been looking at, and a couple of cases have had to, I believe, issue condemned notices for. So there's been a lot of extra work there that had not ever been dealt with.
We also have a few LTC license to carry cases that are pending. You can use Leo Council for free.
Right, yeah.
The, um, the ones associated with the land acquisitions and the, everything to do with that, the, I see painted out of this, but, I mean, it's, it's only seventy-five hundred dollars, and that's fine. But, I mean, shouldn't we be tracking these funds separately so that we can have a decision whether we want to use it out of operation cash, or do we want to lump it all into, to a bond issue when the time comes? At, at some point, someone's going to ask the question from this side of the table, what was our total cost to do this project? And it's not just going to be the bond issue, very good, because you're going to have this piece that, and maybe internally you can get coded that way. So, yeah, we used operating cash, but this really is an expense that belongs over here.
Could be, yeah. I mean, one of the things we had talked about this past year, at least when Ed and I talked way back when, was building the budget, especially for legal. We've kept it pretty flat at twenty-five thousand, I think, for a number of years now. And we knew that, you know, Board of Health was going to be using it more, Open Space was going to be using it more, Bylaws was using it, Planning was using it. You know, we were talking about not, not having it divvied out amongst each of those departments, but having everybody in their budget presentation say, hey, I think we're going to need a couple thousand dollars for legal, for Planning Board, for example, so that we could actually make the argument to, to change that, that amount for...
No, and I like, I like.
So we started that, but we didn't follow through.
Yeah, I have it like, I like having, I don't know if it's central, either just under the TA or under the select boards preview, under one of those lines, right, to have it all there. But I'm just saying, within the details of what's there.
Yeah.
Because if, because if we, fast forward a year, we've got an increase here, wouldn't it be prudent for us to say, okay, give me a printout of what all those charges were and what they were for? Hey, that's a one-time, this is, it seems like we have a pattern, you know?
Sure.
To allow us to go deeper into these things.
Yeah.
Without having necessarily pull out invoices from KP. That's all.
Okay, right. Technology Services, Scott, anything on?
That's actually for two Adobe licenses. Unfortunately, we deal mostly with PDFs, so it allows us to get some lifetime licenses instead of doing the twenty to thirty dollars every month that Adobe charges. You would actually own licenses forever. But, you know, we, we pretty much deal in PDFs all the time, so editing them, making forms, combining files, it actually saves a significant amount of time.
And that's a one-time cost?
It is now. They're so expert fleecing the consumer.
Well, did you see, yeah, did you see the news today about it?
About Adobe?
Yep, going all the way to Supreme Court.
Okay, let's keep on track. Anyway, Board of Health contracted services, so the sixty-three hundred, you know, we know that maybe there's a couple thousand left to be spent, but, you know, is there a nine thousand dollar bill awaiting us before the end of the fiscal year? We don't.
It's not clear at all.
Have a clue exactly on that. Um, election registration expenses, six hundred and eighty dollars to come from the assistant accountant wages. And this is because of additional cost for the postage on mail-in ballots, probably for part of the special election, I would think, maybe? Um, so we mail out, I think they told us they were going to mail out about a thousand ballots, which, you know, the return on the mail-in is pretty, pretty minimal, quite honestly. If we get a third of those back, we're, we're doing well. But we have to, anybody that's checked the box that says that they want a mail-in ballot, we have to mail them out. So, that's where that postage is coming from.
That's my impression.
That's where the postage is coming from, I'm sure there. Um, health director salary, three hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty cents coming from the Board of Health expenses. Um, and only, unanticipated housing issues is what it says here, and I'm not sure what that means, but I assume meetings and other dealing with.
The condemnation.
Charlie and stuff on that.
Hers for the condemnation issues.
Mm-hmm.
I believe, it's not her personal house.
No, 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 no.
I'm not sure.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that. But, I mean, I don't know if that equals...
About eleven hours worth.
Okay, eleven hours, thereabouts, okay.
A traditional hour.
Yeah, okay. So that's what that's about. Veterans Agent expenses from the Veteran Benefits Line, a hundred and twenty dollars. That's to buy a cabinet, a storage cabinet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Tax title, seven hundred dollars to come from, I'm sorry, postage, a thousand dollars to come from, uh, treasure collector wages. Tax title, seven hundred, also from treasure collector wages. And treasure collector expenses at six hundred dollars from treasure collector wages. So, since you're here, you want to talk about just the deficits briefly? Why don't you, so we can all hear you, sorry. Thanks. We'll take advantage of you being here.
Jennifer Day, treasure collector. Um, so postage, we're, I'm asking for, I put a thousand dollars. Um, so after looking at the balance, and we still have to mail out the real estate bills, we have an invoice due to Art Jones for postage in the amount of six hundred and twenty-two dollars. It's going to bring us to a six dollar and eight cent deficit. So I wanted to put another thousand in there just to be safe for the last two weeks of the year, for other departments to use it, and for whatever else may come up. Why the postage was underestimated, I, I mean, I can't really fully explain, but, you know, there were, um, a couple of postage increases in fiscal year twenty-four, and I'm not sure if there, you know, it is a town-wide expense. All of the departments use the postage machine, so, you know, did some of them do more mailing than usual? I, I don't know. But it did fall short this year. Um, and even going forward into the future, we will definitely have to put more money into fiscal year twenty-five postage, because it looks like it was budgeted the same as twenty-four.
So if this thousand goes through, you create the Art Jones bill, and then the balance of it, you'll just preload the machine?
Um, so, I don't, I can preload the machine, so I can do that, so it's there for next year, like, you know, give it a little buffer, I guess. Or I can not spend it, and it will just go into free cash. I mean, I guess preloading the machine sounds like the better idea right now.
I, I don't know what normal practice is.
Yeah.
I mean...
And if I'm going to do that, I wonder if I should even do another transfer to, just, you know, for, out of, later on.
Does that, because that's a newer machine that's in there now, right?
Right.
Does it track it by, do people have codes, like, we can see over a period of time?
There are codes, yes.
So the mail-in for real estate, um, personal property that you have to do before the end of the month, that would be?
Yeah, so the cost of that is, um, where is it? Like, I can't even see in here. One thousand eighty-four dollars. One thousand nine hundred, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Am I reading it right? I'm blind.
Yeah. Well, it, I mean, it sounds like you're, you're running close there, but, I mean, whether it's, whether it's possible to preload the machine, if you, if you happen a little bit of extra, then.
Yeah, it is. It is possible, so I can do that. Plus, you know, I think even the cost of ink went up, and I think even just with all these, like, now mailing, mail-out ballots, you know, the cost of ink is almost three hundred dollars for the, you know, cartridge to fill the machine. So we definitely go through more ink, and it's more expensive. So there's that, too.
How about a little bit on the tax title and the expenses that you're asking?
Um, so tax... So tax title, I just received an invoice for May for $897. I only have $712.86 left in the account. I'm estimating, you know, there will also be a June invoice. I'm not sure how much, as of when I talked to the tax title attorney last, he had only billed us for $50. I added another 500, like, for June instead of 50, just because I know there'll be, like, services he does due to the tax title auction and just other properties that are currently in the encore. So unfortunately, we only have 3,000. I did budget for 5,000 for this coming fiscal year.
Sorry, revolving?
No, so this is also depleting the revolving fund.
Okay. And then just summing expenses, $600, just general?
So, my balance right now is $172.59. I have a couple of invoices due for Art Jones and for Amazon, so this is, the Amazon is for bill paper for Vadar, because we, you know, that wasn't budgeted for. So we have to buy perforated legal-sized paper now to print the preliminary bills for Vadar, so I had to purchase that. And then, I think a lot of the reason behind the deficit though, not, you know, just this bill paper, it's not because of the Art Jones bill, because that was like, you know, known that we would pay Art Jones. But we did have to spend 500, around $500 to file ACA this year, because they changed the filing requirements, where if you had over 10 employees, you had to file electronically. So we were using, we use, like, ComplyRight software to file that, because our software, SoftRight didn't have an ACA module, so we had to buy a software program to put in every year to produce those forms. And unfortunately, ComplyRight doesn't allow you to do an electronic file, like, right to the IRS, they charge you. So we had to pay, like, for something per form for them to file to the IRS electronically. They won't let you just, like, pull it out yourself. So that was $500 extra that I had to spend.
Thankfully, how did we do that?
I know, thankfully.
Okay, so, what's our thoughts here? How we want to tackle this? Pulled up Bradley's last expense reports, if anybody's got questions about balances, and Bradley's here too, we can take a look at some of these if you want to check on anything. I'd rather take advantage of people being here tonight, I realize we don't have all the greatest backup, but otherwise, that would mean you guys would have to have another meeting to vote yourselves, and then we'd have to have another meeting too, so. What's anybody thinking about?
Anything to just approve these transfers or anything for some of them?
Okay.
New discussion? All in bag?
Okay. All right. I'm just going to take a look, I'm just trying to take a look at what the legal balance was. Can you just tell me what that is? I'm just trying to find it clearly here. Oh, I just see it, sorry. We're about 80% spent, around 5,000 left as of mid-June, is that right? And we definitely have got more stuff to be done, so that's where that one's coming from.
How far behind is the firm billing? Two months?
Yeah, about two months.
They're probably a 60-day biller, yeah.
And do we have to then pay 24 bills in '25 under a similar process?
Yeah, we would encumber a certain amount of money for after July 1st for whatever bills are outstanding.
This transfer would take care of, we hope.
So, yeah, there shouldn't be, probably another legal one. I mean, we may have more transfers, but not another legal expense one for this fiscal year.
The month, the June invoice will show up in July.
Right, but I'm hoping that the plan of the 7,000 or whatever you've got here...
Yeah, that should cover it.
That should cover it. $7,500 should cover what we've got in the works.
But it's certainly not our last shot to...
Right, yeah. And I think on, just briefly, I'm just trying to find it, library maintenance, da-da-da, where'd it go? Just had it. Maybe you can pull it up quicker, Bradley. Let's see, which one is it under? Library maintenance, what's left in there? $211, so they're about done with what they have there. Council on Aging expenses has $1.92 left. So they're kind of at the precipice, and I think that was one of the issues that they brought up during their budget presentation too, that they were definitely under-budgeted. And then, Scott, you already talked about technology, so, any others? Okay. If not...
So I'm not comfortable with the first one, ambulance maintenance without additional information. I'm not comfortable with the board of health contracted services without additional information or somebody showing me the math. I think it's there, it's just not in that explanation.
I mean, tech, you take...
And as a general rule, I'm not comfortable with the health director's salary of 11 extra hours. I mean, they have a set amount to work in, and that's what they do. Of all of them, $342, I guess I could let that one go. But the $6,300 and $9,500, I think, are large enough numbers that the work needs to be shown. You know, I suspect the $6,300, you're going to, you know, if we go through, someone goes through the analysis of saying, you know, here's the first 10 months that they've billed and this is what they're tracking, this kind of thing. It's going to come somewhere near there, but that's the department that we get the most pushback from the residents on. So, bulletproof our case, here's the documents they print, yep, it passes the mustard test, and then do the transfer, and we still have time.
Yeah, we do. So you're, what I'm hearing you say is to pull off maybe the ambulance maintenance and the board of health contracted services until the second round of transfers?
I'm fine approving all of this with the exception of letter A and letter J, and I'll support those if I can get backup documents that get closer to those numbers.
Or just for patients.
And that's...
Do you mean you consider the ambulance unless they're run out, because there is...
Yeah, and I'm fine with adjusting that $9,500 down to the cumulative of those two invoices that you provide, that somebody provided us tonight. Right, the Ford and then the tires, whatever those are, whatever that number needs to be, to make sure, I'm good with that too.
Yeah, because that's around maybe seven or eight, it maybe, maybe they just rounded it up to the 95, but I think it was closer to maybe 8,000 or something, if, I don't know if you can figure that out, but we could, we could put that, we don't have to have the exact amount, make the motion that's less, it's based on the two invoices that we were presenting.
Yeah, so I'll approve this, but I'm making a motion to approve this as presented with the following exceptions. Letter A and letter J can only be paid up to those $2 amounts pending backup documentation to justify that number. They can't go above those numbers. So whatever that Ford dealership one is and the tires combined...
So I see $846.58 for the tire barn invoice, and then for the Markat Ford, for $4,514.81, so a total of $5,361.39.
So you rounded it to $5,500?
There was something more though, that had the H, the air conditioning on the...
Isn't that the Ford one? It was like a three-page invoice?
Yeah, there's a longer invoice there, so we've got to be careful on that.
This subtotal is, Bradley said, $45.14.
Okay. All right. So that...
So, yeah, so the letter A adjusted down to $5,400, $5,400.
Okay. And J, I'm sorry?
And J, just somewhat, somebody needs to do, and I'm not suggesting it's Bradley, but somebody needs to do the work. Here are my outstanding invoices that haven't been submitted yet, here's what the contractor believes they're going to be.
Okay.
Put the dot numbers together.
So do you want to hold that one off altogether?
Subtract available balance.
Hold that one together. Hold that one for the second round, or?
Yep.
You have, you have money to pay an invoice that, you said you've got about 2,800 left in that line, COA?
Board of Health, Service.
Yeah, I believe we have partially, we can partially take the May invoice.
So maybe, maybe we could take a portion of it without...
Well, I think they can bring us a May invoice times two, less the available balance, and I'd be good with that, but I really don't know where we're headed.
And if it's that one single line item, I mean, we could do, I mean, when are we here again? We're here tomorrow night.
We are here tomorrow.
Right, so if somebody, if somebody could do that...
They proved everything for us.
Yeah.
You guys can eliminate it.
Yeah.
You know, if we can just get that answer tomorrow, right, under other business, we could do a separate vote for that one line item.
Totally possible.
Now, is this, this is not the, I just wanted to be clear, this is not the health agent wages, right?
No.
It's the board of health...
Money's coming from group health insurance.
So, yeah, $2,700 left. So let's see if we can get the answer on that one tomorrow night and we can take this one up again tomorrow night. You guys have already approved it, so I think if we just, you know...
So you want to kill the motion and just hold this for...
No. No, I think, let's go with what we've got, so we can get, go with that.
Make a motion to approve this with the following amendments. Letter A be adjusted to $5,400. Letter J be held pending justification documents, and the rest as is stated.
Okay. All right. And shall we say that if we have the justification documents tomorrow, would we pick it up tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm happy to take it up under other business.
So we have justification enough on those, we can reconsider them tomorrow night, because we'll be meeting tomorrow night, so we can take it up under any other business. Okay. So with that, I think we had a second, Stephen, yeah? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, good. I think that takes care of that. So that gets a few of these done, and we know that we'll be probably having more transfers coming at us before the end of the fiscal year, okay? Good. I think that's it for finance committee. We have one issue, I think, just on our side, we have a vacation carryover request for Randall. You want to explain that a little bit?
To Jen, to Bradley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I'm going to have to...
Yeah.
Somebody handed them to me.
Yeah.
The PCO, whoever it is, signed at the last meeting.
Yeah, Robin gave them to you, the new positions.
They're just in the box.
The highway department, season of labor.
Oh, yeah.
And... The 20 hours to 19 hours? Was that the one? The searchers office?
Holding our coffee or can we take it out and see what's more?
I don't think the minutes have been... I mean, if you want to meet, I can run home and get one while away.
Okay, so let us take, while you're doing whatever, you want to stay in session or you want to adjourn, or what do you do?
Can we stay in session?
Stay in session and just...
Go to the house or...
Yeah, or just in the break room or wherever you want to sit, yeah. And we'll just take up one more issue and then we'll be done. So, thank you all for coming and appreciate it. And then, I think, Scott, you guys had worked out, right, in terms of, rather than having another meeting, but at least watching the video on the presentation Scott did about the classification plan, if you haven't done that. I guess you guys have worked out something on that, so we can move forward with this panel as your board.
Yes.
You still waiting for volunteers?
Yeah, well, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to the select board about some services, something locally that has not identified some assistance as well.
Okay. But people have, you're not going to have a meeting on it with the finance committee?
No, no.
Okay.
Got to be volunteers.
Okay, good. Well, thank you all for coming, much appreciated. Okay, Scott, you want to run us through this last question on the transfer?
Yep. So Randall is looking to carry over 10 hours of vacation into next year to be used by June 30th, 2025. Obviously, with the understaffing of the highway department, Randall's had to put in a lot of extra time, so he's generally available 24/7, and is just allowed to move over those 10 hours if he doesn't use them up.
If he doesn't use them up, so he's using some now, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
How unusual is such a request?
Other than this value, it's not unusual in measure of Southhampton's history, though.
Yeah.
But it seems to be referencing the policy.
It's common. It's common between his position, the fire chief and the police chiefs. They usually come before PPP. This one didn't come in with the other group. Wait, can't you... My question is, now that we're on the new payroll system, and I don't know the answer to this, but are we, are we tracking through the pay stubs how much time they have? Is it being coded? Because if it is, I think this whole process could be streamlined. Where's your pay stub? What is it? And then the TA could, because of these three positions that I'm talking about, all have to get approval from the TA in order to go on vacation. So there should be an easy check and balance there that we can just automate this. The town says you can carry over one week, five days, you know, upon submitting it, comes in, boom, yep, it's true, your time's right, the record's right, certify it, go. I don't even think we have to get involved with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Going forward, if it's automated. If it's the old days where someone's keeping it on a sheet of paper and forgetting when someone's out, that's a different story.
Trapped in the system.
Yeah.
So it should be, yeah. Okay, so at this point in time, he may or may not need all of it, but he wants to be sure that he doesn't lose it, basically, so...
I'll make a motion to approve up to 10 hours carryover.
Second.
All right.
To be used in...
20, 25, yeah.
Yeah, as needed, yeah, by the end of June 25. Yeah, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, and with that, we have a meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, our usual time.
6 o'clock, sorry.
Tomorrow night's our regular select board meeting, and we'll be here at 6 o'clock tomorrow night, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. We are adjourned at 8:18. Thank you very much.